All right, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Ortonville Village Council Meeting for April 25th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM and we would call the meeting to order. We would like to start with a pledge allegiance this evening led by trustee Dialas, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we will have the roll call this evening.
Hayden?
Here.
Dialas?
Present.
George?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Nyval?
Here.
Randazzo?
Here.
Bryce?
Here. Thank you.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda.
To approve the agenda as presented?
Support?
Lovely.
Um, all right, well, we have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee George. Any questions, comments? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the council minutes from our regular minute meeting of March 28th, 2022. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the village council, March 28th, 2022, as presented.
Support?
We have motion on the table by trustee Nyval and that's supported by trustee Hayden. Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries seven zero. Item number six this evening is the acceptance items and with those you will find the finance report from the village treasurer and the revenue and expenditure report as well from the village treasurer. We thank you very much again, Bethy, as usual, wonderful job. Item number seven is the approval of our dispersments. This evening's dispersments will end on April 15th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the dispersments of $20,602.89 for the period of March 16th, 2022 through April 15th, 2022.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Green. Do we have any questions on the dispersments?
Um, I have a couple. The 21398 charter township of, what is the plan review for 189 Ball Street? It's only $50, but I was just curious what the plan review for Ball Street was.
So that took place before the March village council meeting where we entered the agreement with Brandon Township for inspection services. Prior to that, we were without an inspector and so we were working with the township to continue inspections kind of as, on an as-needed basis, so we were paying per inspection. Now we're onto an annual agreement.
Okay, which is the one below the higher number? So that was part of the inspections, okay. And then the other thing, Detroit salt, are we done with the salt? Is that the, is the rock salt, the, what we're using for, are we done with that?
Good question, we filled the barn. We have a pretty good sized salt barn, so we filled it. It's usually a little cheaper in the spring than it is in the fall or winter, so we did it. We've got room to store it, so we did.
Cool, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Dialas?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries seven zero. Next up is item eight, which is the public comments. At this time, the public comments are on agenda items only. Please keep in mind you do have three minutes, if there's something you'd like to share, questions you'd like to ask, anything that is on your mind, on agenda items only at this time. Further on down the agenda, we do have a non-agenda item, time to speak as well, so we hope to hear from you. You can just kind of raise your hand, stand, whatever you'd like.
Hey, Tanya, does she, does she have to, then through, we go through everything before she can speak?
For anything that's not agenda.
Okay, all right, I was just checking, I know we've changed it before in the past, so, okay.
Is there something that you had? Is there something that you wanted to speak?
No.
No, okay, I just want to be sure, we didn't want to, anyone? All right, well, we hope to hear from you later. Um, next up is the approval of our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda is the minutes from the Brandon Township meeting of January 10th, the minutes from the Ortonville DDA meeting of January 24th, the minutes of the Township Library meeting from the 25th of January, the minutes of the li, I'm sorry, the Board of Brandon Township, February 7th, the minutes of the Brandon Township Library, February 22nd, the minutes of the Planning Commission Special Meeting, February 24th, the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of March 1st, the minutes of the Brandon Township Board of March 7th, the minutes of the Downtown DDA, March 21st, the minutes of the RRC Committee, March 23rd, the attorney invoice from April, the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting, April 11th, as well as April 18th, the proclamation for May 22nd as Mental Health Awareness Month, the special event permit for the Ortonville DDA Spring Garden Market, which is May 7th, the special event permit for the Memorial Day Parade, which is May 30th, and the special event permit for the Ortonville DDA Farmers Market, which is Saturdays, June 18th through October 1st. We've had a very busy month, as you can see and beyond, I love seeing all of the progress everywhere.
Support?
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Nyval. Do we have any questions at this time? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries seven zero. Next up is items from trustees, and if you don't mind, Keith, we will start with you.
We have some street stuff later in the agenda really to talk about, so outside of the stuff that we're going to talk about later in the agenda, I guess I don't have any other new updates.
Sure. All right, and next up would be, Pat?
Yeah, regarding the Historical Society, remember that they are open now on Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on an ongoing basis. Blacksmith classes are held on the first Saturday of August. And I think you mentioned it, the Spring Garden Show will be in town on Saturday, December. Of course, the after will be over by the old bell. And on Saturday, May 14th, the Michigan Historical Society, we're bringing a plus flow of people through the work areas, we'll get our historical.
Nice. Is there a certain set schedule or anything or idea for that, or?
I'm sure there will.
Plus.
Yeah, there's three or four sets throughout Oakland County.
It starts in Holly, their conference is in Holly this year, and we are the first stop that morning. I'm talking with Judy Miracle a couple of times in the next few weeks, so we will have more information for you in the near future.
Wonderful.
The was, the garden and painting of that building, it was, you know, a question when that door was locked, it was a lot of people sorry for us because it hasn't been.
Bring your own tin can.
Bring your brush.
So all the way out, we don't know where to go.
Yeah, anything else? All right, thank you. Okay, please?
In your packet, there were a couple of meetings that we've had so far, we've been working diligently on getting through the personnel policies. We have a draft over here tonight to review, and any comments, questions, ideas, we need your input by May 6th, and otherwise, we'll go into policy and we'll change as necessary as we can. Basically, that's it.
So the, you'd like input by May 6th and then that will come toward the May meeting?
Yes.
To be, okay, all right, thank you. All right, anything else at this time?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Larry, please.
Yes, IT committee did not meet this past month, however, there is an item in the agenda that the village manager will be bringing up that we have been discussing with the IT committee, so I will probably, I'm looking to schedule another IT committee meeting within the next two weeks before our first budget workshop, so we can have some updates to bring to the budget workshop. And Ryan, I'll get with you, find out times.
Okay. All right, Melanie, please is next.
Okay, um, the Wayfinding and Heritage Garden Committees will be meeting this week on Tuesday, Wednesday, it's a busy week. Planning Commission has been working on the CIP and also the fee schedule. We will see the CIP for the first time since Bob and Ryan have been working on it at our next meeting. Which is when?
Thursday, May 5th.
Okay, because Bob thinks it's Tuesday as well, so I will text.
There is an election on Tuesday, May 3rd.
Right.
So Planning Commission meets on Thursday, May 5th.
Okay, I will text him, thank you. That's it.
Which to note, there is not a Brandon election, but there is an election Oakland County, and so we don't know when we plan it until everything is in, I think it's what, the end of January, you wouldn't know. So planning that schedule before then, we automatically plan it, so I just don't want people to worry that they didn't receive anything on their May election. I know Groveland has an election, Clarkson, there's, there are multiple people in the area, so keep an eye out for your area. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, excellent, and Tony, please. All right. Thank you. And I will defer to update from the DDA because I always end up saying, any questions, ask you anyway, so if you don't mind, because you are here, whenever you're over there, it's always, hey, I'll answer the question for you, so I'll let you, unless you want me to.
Um, no, that's okay, I don't really have anything to update you guys with because we just met last, last week, last week, for our joint meeting, um.
Just the highlights on the, um.
Oh, oh!
Deck Garden.
Oh! Yes, I remember. Um, we got notified today by Main Street Oakland County that the community that brings the most community members to the main event gets $1,500 in training from the county.
Wow.
We're behind. So if anybody wants to come, um.
Bring food.
Well, I think.
Yes.
Um, somebody's got 10 and we've got eight, um, but that just went out today, so I would imagine that people are scrambling to get people to come. Um, so if you've ever volunteered with, worked with, done anything with, thought about doing something with the DDA, you are welcome to join us. It's $35, you get dinner, cash bar, nice show, it's fun. May 5th, Flagstar Strand Theater in Pontiac.
Theme encouraged?
There's no theme this year.
What?
I don't think so.
I thought it was the.
What's that?
There's usually a theme, they did superheroes one year, and I don't think there's a theme, they did a radio show one year, I don't think there's a theme this year. Um, and then the garden show is Saturday, May 7th. We will have a raffle, um, so we do need people who are available to work the table, because I will not be there that day, I will actually be graduating down at U of M in Arbor.
Congrats.
Two years in the making, I only graduated in 2020, right? So it's about time. Um, so I, but I get to walk at the big house, so that's not an opportunity I can really say no to. But they, we do need, therefore, we do need people to work the table, but that goes from nine to three, and I haven't broken down in timeframes, so if you're available, let me know, um.
It's a good day to spend time with your family for Mother's Day and make them all come and volunteer?
Mm-hmm, there's going to be demonstrations, gardening demonstrations, um, as well as, you know, things, gardening things for sale, um, from different vendors, and then.
Ladies' night.
That's, that's not DDA, no. Two items that are not DDA technically related, but DDA is kind of, sort of helping with, Ladies' Night Out, which is the May 28th, May 21st, May 21st, um, strolling through downtown, vendors, all that kind of fun stuff. And then this Saturday is the Road Rally that's being hosted by Andrea Webster, who's just a member of the community at large, and this is her second annual, there will be food trucks and games and all kinds of fun stuff. She's still accepting teams, uh, groups of four to go out and participate in the Road Rally Scavenger Hunt, which is a lot of fun, you get to go to all the different places in the community, um, and that runs from 12 to 6. We will have a volunteer table set up for people to learn how they can volunteer in the community. I think that's it, and we're going to Main Street now, the 15th through the 18th. I think that's it?
Think you have it all? Thanks. Ryan, anything you would like to add?
Uh, the only one I think that we missed is the RRC Committee. We haven't met since council last met, we've had a couple scheduling issues, but we're going to get together and work next Monday to keep pushing forward on a couple items. The Planning Commission getting into the zoning ordinance is going to help tremendously with the RRC effort, so we're going to be working to help with that as well.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, item 11 this evening for us is our unfinished business, and we'll begin this with the Personnel Policy Draft, and who would like to start with that?
I can start, you guys fill in the blank. Your packet contains the continued draft of the Personnel Policy. We, the last meeting in March, we saw several of the sections that were recommended and approved by the Personnel Committee, and we have added more to this draft that's in your packet. So similar to last month, we are looking for input prior to May 6th of 2022, so you have until next Friday to read through this, send comments to myself or anyone on the Personnel Committee, let us know what you think, if you have questions, concerns, thoughts, feel free to share them, and in the meantime, we will continue to review and revise other sections and continue to add to this working draft. We don't need a vote or anything, we just want to, uh, want to let you know by May 6th we are looking for input. Any other thoughts or comments, Personnel Committee?
Mr. Anybody, has anybody had any input? Just curious.
I have not submitted mine.
Yeah, lately, no, we've had lots, this is, a lot of our updates are based on the in, input since July of last year that we started looking at this, so we've got lots of input, we're trying to meld together into this new version. Work continues.
I think if I was going to ask something from the rest of the council, on one of the pages in there, one of the first pages in the draft, it has other policies to consider for inclusion. I think it would be helpful for us and Personnel to, if you identify anything there in particular in that list of additional possible policies that you think needs to be in there prior to us approving this final draft, I think that would be good input, because that would help us know what to focus on and make sure it's in there. See something that stands out that's, that's really needed.
You said they should direct questions, comments, and inputs to you?
Yes, sure. Easy as pie.
I was typing.
Yeah.
That's all.
Me.
Okay.
Me.
I just missed it while I was typing.
Okay.
All right. Make sure we send lots and lots of great info to Ryan. All right, next up is the Crosman Park Storm Drain Project Phase 2.
All right, your packet contains a quote from Diamond Excavating, "To finalize the Crosman Park Storm Drain Project with two options for you to choose from." The quote is for resurfacing the entire section of Mill Street that is currently milling's, the north side of the road, from the Brandon Township Office's driveway to Mill Street, and then from Mill Street to the creek, as well as the rest of that section of Mill Street. So it's not just the things that are currently milling's. The quote is to do curb to curb, the entire roadway from creek to intersection. The project has not yet exceeded the up to amount that was authorized for the project at the village council January meeting, but restoring the road will require funds beyond that amount. That's what brings us to this point today. During February, Mr. Diamond and his crew completed the underground work for the Crosman Park Storm Drain, bless you. The original budget included paving costs, but there were a couple of unforeseen issues, and I authorized the use of the paving funds to complete the underground work safely and without further delay. I kept village council informed of this, and DPW Director Hawkswell has done a fantastic job of grading the area that is milling's, keeping it drivable, and every time it gets cloudy, he has potholes to fill, so he has done a great job of that. On April 8th, Mr. Diamond, our engineer, Pat McWilliams and Bob, we met to discuss what will be needed to finish the project as a result of this meeting. The quote before he reflects paving all of Mill Street from curb to curb, from the intersection at South Street to the creek. This will improve the entire road surface through a bulk of downtown for the long term, rather than patching the part of the road that's currently torn up. As presented, the project will take several days to complete, up to one week, and no access to that section of Mill Street will be possible during the work. Option A calls for using pulverized milling, so similar to what's on the surface now would be used as the base underneath the top coat, whereas option B calls for 21 AA limestone aggregate as a base. Either is feasible and both are widely used, but limestone increases the longevity of the road surface. For how long, I can't really say, I did some digging, I talked with our engineer quite a bit, he basically said both options very viable, the Chevy option is to do milling's, the Cadillac option is to do limestone. Both have pros and cons, both, both are very viable options. If approved, this would be a priority project for the village and the contractor, as we were all eager to get this project done with. There's urgency to complete this project before the summer and all the things that happen downtown during the summer. The DDA Executive Director and I will continue to work with businesses and property owners to keep them informed as the projects progress. I recommend the village council choose either option A or option B for the project and approve the quote from Diamond Excavating and the amount specified for that selected option.
Ryan, how much is left in the current budget?
So we budgeted $300,000 for this project at the beginning of the year, you'll see that in the treasurer's report, so far, we've spent $317,000 for this project. We had approved up to 325, and 80,000 of that was going to be to pave the part that was torn up. A significant portion of that was used to finish the project on time and safely. There were some, there's a lot of sand, there were a couple issues with the existing surface becoming unsafe, so.
Some of your money elsewhere, do you take it from?
We do. Great question.
And then, so option A, there's like a $23,000 difference between the two, and A is really not, it's any better than B as far as longevity? Kind of, sort of, right?
Yes and no, I might defer to Luanna on this one, actually, if Dan was here, I'd.
Oh, I should Dan that.
Well, and I, so that's the, the one question.
I didn't really remember, that's been several years ago, they green milk mill, a creek question off the road, and then paved over it, and it lasted very sustained, I mean, you can't beat the limestone, but I think the amount of traffic, you don't allow heavy trucks, I just, maybe I should consider, I'm not, on one way or the other, but that would make a difference to it, you don't get the amount of traffic like if it was.
Yeah.
If it was okay.
I do know that how we did it, passed out, and didn't move it up, and paved over it.
Well, and then I'm just concerned, are we, you know, we had talked about, are they going to be digging this up within 10 years if sewers come through?
If sewers were to happen, yes, more than likely. I, the engineering is still out, we don't know definitively, but I would suspect, yes.
Right, but 10 years is, I mean, you would.
I mean, if any of you travel Oakland, I, I want to say that was probably 20 years ago, I don't want it to come down again, but, well, mill, mill.
Gosh, it doesn't seem that long ago.
They're effective, they're good stuff.
Well, just to make this official, so we can actually discuss it like we're supposed to, I'm going to make a motion to approve Diamond Excavating's quote for resurfacing Mill Street for option A at the amount of $129,045.
Support?
All right, we have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Dialas. Any comments or discussion?
Thanks, Luanna.
Additional?
So you were saying, you were saying, option A or B, were you saying?
She's not, she's not saying.
Not advocating either.
What were you saying? You didn't hook with us. Made mill, that exists, did you pay, and then ash called it over? And I drove that to work for five or six years before I moved back to Florida, it was, it was fun.
Um, I, I did think about this because it's about, almost 20% more to do with the aggregate, but if we don't know that it's going to extend the longevity of the road for at least 20%, I really can't say that we can justify spending the extra money, that's.
So you said you said option B.
Ryan, one of the questions, I'm sorry, I failed to ask you earlier, and I just thought about it this afternoon, does our timing on whatever we choose have any impact on the bridge work? If they're on top doing anything, will it mess with anything, any of our?
And this would be a priority that happens before the regular.
Right, and that's why I want to make sure, is it okay to do before, there isn't a reason to wait, okay?
No.
That was my only.
Good question.
Sorry, I didn't ask you.
Yeah, they're not ready to have equipment to do the bridge work.
This section is getting just kind of a, a two or three day, yeah, sprucing up, it's not anything too wild, yeah. South Street's the thing.
And they're ready, I know we talked about it, but in case council wants to know, they're ready and available, they, they're not booked right now saying, oh, we can't get till, till June or July, they could do it now.
This project has been penciled onto Diamond's calendar since he left in February, and he's anxious to get it, get it going. So I think as soon as Matt and I are able to speak with business owners, let them know, maybe talk to the citizen once or twice to make sure everyone is as informed as possible, but he's ready to, ready to go.
Thank you.
You said it about a week?
Yeah.
Any other questions, thoughts? Is everybody ready for a decision?
Yes.
All right. Courtney, if you don't mind, would you repeat the motion?
To approve option A from Diamond Excavating, I'll see in the amount of $129,045.
To approve Option A from Diamond Excavating, I'll see in the amount of $129,045.
Ready for roll call vote? All right, please.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyvel?
Yes.
Randozzo?
Yes.
Dialas?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, Ryan, for being very funny.
We'll keep you posted.
I see light at the end of this project.
Yes. Very eager to get it finished.
Wonderful. Item 12 this evening is our new business, and we'll begin with the amended Village Council 2022 meeting schedule.
Were we supposed to have something in our packet, or just...
We were waiting to finalize it.
Okay.
So, sorry, a little clunky. We're waiting to schedule it. And then we'll send an updated calendar if approved, if scheduled. So the work continues on the 2022-2023 budget. Staff and several others have been very involved in this effort. And now it is time to schedule some workshops for the Village Council, part of this, this fun exercise. So efforts to prepare the budget have taken many approaches over the last several months, working with our treasurer, reviewing expected revenues and anticipated expenses for our 2022-2023 budget. I've asked for wish lists from council, planning commission, the DDA, village staff, each department. Everybody has included some items they would like to see in the near future or the further out future. Each committee has also had an opportunity to consider items they would like to see. So the running list, which I can show you, is pretty long, but we, it has helped us generate a lot of items for the proposed budget. Additionally, the capital improvements plan is starting to take shape. Planning Commission Chairman MacArthur and I met this afternoon for our next round of talking about what needs to happen sooner rather than later, and which ones can wait a couple of years. But this effort will demonstrate how we will work to fund some of the bigger items facing the village over the next six, seven years and beyond. Chairman MacArthur and I have attended trainings led by the Michigan Association of Planning. I attended one by an engineering company last week. We continue to learn about CIPs and the best practices for them. The Planning Commission is tasked with leading the charge on CIPs by the Planning Enabling Act, but the Village Council will have the opportunity to provide input and feedback along the way. So the goal is for the CIP to be adopted along with the budget at the June 27, 2022 Village Council meeting, so mark your calendars today. The next step is to schedule budget workshops for the Village Council. As already discussed, the joint meetings, we scheduled three joint meetings throughout the year among the village boards and commissions. The next one is set for June 13 at 7:00 PM with a focus on the 2022-2023 budget. If we approve this item, the Village Council will hold two additional budget workshops, one being two weeks from tonight, May 9 at 7:00 PM, and the other happening also on June 13 at 6:00 PM. So that would give us, be on time if you can, we'll start, we'll do Village Council only at 6:00 and then have our joint meeting at 7:00. So we'll have a little bit of work time before the meeting with everybody, beginning at 7:00. These workshops will allow council and staff to go through the budget together, address any issues or concerns, and work through the budget drafts collectively. May 9 is a little earlier than normal, but it will allow time for staff to take into account the discussion items in preparing the next draft. June 13 allows council to spend time immediately before the joint meeting discussing the budget, then the joint meeting will bring everybody in for more discussion. I recommend the Village Council schedule two additional budget workshops on May 9 at 7:00 PM and June 13 at 6:00 PM.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, we got to update our calendar for the year.
I'd like to make a motion for, for the Village Council to schedule two additional budget workshops on May 9 at 7:00 PM and June 13 at 6:00 PM.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Nyvel, and it is supported by Trustee Green. Do we have any questions or thoughts?
Nice.
That was the point, no teasing.
Yeah.
Anybody else concerned about their schedule of this budget?
May 9 at 7, June 13 at 6.
Both on Monday.
Oh, read it at the bottom.
May 9 at 7, June 13 at 6.
Long thing, I didn't see him at the bottom.
Did you get your wish list in for your Parks and Rec committees and whatnot, for CIP information to write in? Oh.
All right, any other questions or thoughts on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, that motion carries 7-0. Item B, this evening is the 175th Anniversary Time Capsule, and I'll send that over to Manager Mattis, please.
All right, so the village of Ortonville has its 175th anniversary coming up in 2023, and this item is to begin the celebration with the authorization of a time capsule. So founded in 1848, the village will turn 175 years young in 2023. The Historical Society is well aware of this and has begun preparations for a celebration next summer. As, as Pat talked about earlier, the scale and planning is in the early stages, and we have a meeting coming up, I want to say it's next week. I know it's on my calendar with Judy Miracle and Pat, George and I, to discuss the best way to celebrate and make sure we include everyone possible. Local artist Steve Kozlowski, you may know him as Cos, has a long history with Ortonville. He's eager to help celebrate our rich history. He's worked with a sculptor on similar time capsules in Key West, Florida, and would like to champion this project for Ortonville. He met with the Historical Society in early April and presented this idea to me after gaining their support for this project. The time capsule itself includes a granite marker and is not a below-ground time capsule. The granite marker, it'll be kind of tall. It includes a hollow space inside the base with two cubic feet of space for placement of materials from the year 2023. This type of capsule, no, nevermind. This type of capsule allows for donations and a visible reminder of the capsule as it would be placed on the grounds of the old mill and be visible for the entire 50 years of encapsulation. Better still, because it's, because of its durable construction, it can be reused after being opened in 2073 by replacing the tablets on the sides and tops with the names of the new donors and contributors at that time, but we'll let somebody else worry about that in 2073. This marker would cost $10,500 to commission. Cos plans to begin soliciting donations later this year, along with the formation of more defined parts for how the village will celebrate in 2023. Donations will reimburse the initial cost by the village on behalf of the Historical Society, and additional donations will benefit both OCEF and BGYAA, two organizations Cos is passionate about. With 70 spaces available on a first-come, first-served basis, this has the potential to be a significant fundraiser for two vital local groups. Your packet contains more information about the capsule itself as well as a payment schedule. I recommend the Village Council move to authorize the creation of a granite time capsule in the amount of $10,500.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Green, submitted by Trustee George. Questions or comments?
I think we're putting the cart before the horse when we do projects like this. I, I think we want to do things like this that, that we can, you know, again, we barely have enough money to do things we need to do. There's lots of other projects like the garden that we don't have money to do either. If we want to do something like this, that's great, but then let's put a plan together first to figure out how we're going to get donations to pay for it and then do the project. Not, hey, let's go spend a bunch of money and maybe we can get some donations to reimburse it, which we may or may not get on a project that doesn't, this is a want and not a need, and we can't even afford our needs. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, although it's very cool and I would like to see something like this done. I don't know if it has to be as big as it is, and maybe that could bring the cost down. But I would love to see us maybe look at this after we do our budget and we review our CIP. We haven't reviewed the CIP yet, to see what we have on there. I don't know what Parks and Rec, I don't know what IT needs, none of us have seen that yet, and then we could maybe go back and then approve this, because I think it's cool. I'm just afraid, like, we need a handicap grant that we've been trying to, you know, figure out ways to pay for that and trying to do grants and... Do, do you know, do they have a grant that they can go after for this?
This was not at any cost to the village. It was presented to the Historical Society. He is going to have people who can buy, can put your name on it. It's no cost for the Historical Society or the village. The cost for it will be covered by, you want to put your family's name on it, there's a certain price to be involved in.
Okay.
That, and the cost for that is covered by, anything that they make a profit beyond that, we do put donations. That's all it was presented to the Historical Society. They just basically, the village, from the way it was presented, it means nothing. Is it okay with the village that we, because you don't have a problem? They're not asking for money.
Oh, so this is...
Or the village.
Okay, this, this is asking for money what we have in front of us?
That's not how, that's not how it was presented. Like, if I want to put our name or something, I think the front is a $1,500 fee. It takes, you can put so many names on the front, so many on each side. It's people that are paying to have the names on this one.
So is he the artist asking for anything upfront?
Yes.
And how much is he asking for upfront?
$10,500.
Okay.
But he is going to sell the names to raise the $10,000.
Sure, but we need to sell the names first.
What they're asking for from us, correct me if I'm wrong, is the $10,500 commitment upfront, then we have the commitment. Then they can only sell 70 spots, which, as you say, there might be two different sizes. Mathematically, that's $150 a spot, 70 people. There are 15,000 people in Ortonville. Can we come up with 70 people? There's 70 bricks over in the Township Park, there's 70 bricks at Oakwood. I'm pretty confident we can. What if we don't? That's something we need to discuss. But I believe the way it's set up is we are fronting the commitment. Not only are they selling at September Fest, they're talking about selling at the DDA events, at the food trucks. There's multiple, multiple opportunities over months to sell that. It's not a one-time event, and it's not, you know, if we do, if we don't. So does it fall back on us in the end? Is there a concern that it would fall back on us? I don't think any of those involved feel that concern at all. It's been done before, it's proven itself with that side. Again, it is a very big group decision, but I don't want people to think that this was gone in too lightly by the Historical Society, by Cos, who has been in our community longer than most of us, not you, and by, you know, council, by even researching it. Hold on a minute, because I know Larry hasn't had a chance yet.
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with, with Keith on this matter, because there are a lot of things that we would like to do, and I know that there's a whole bunch of things that are actually in our master plan that the community expressed an interest that they wanted us to do in our community. And yet we don't have money to put towards lots of them. It's like a big, long wish list, and this is what happens, and this is why we don't get things done that are in the master plans, because we get, these new things keep coming in left and right, and instead of saying, okay, does this conform and fit with the master plan, instead we just start doing these things, and then when it comes time to, for, well, what should we do in the master plan? Oh, we don't have any money left. And that's my concern, that we really should look and say, does, is this in alignment? Does this conform with what we have in our master plan, what projects that we want to do? Or would this money maybe be better spent on a different item that we already have defined from the public or anybody, from the community, that we want to actually achieve in our community? So that's kind of my take on it.
So is that the same thought if we are not committing funds? If we are committing funds, they get reimbursed to us, is that the same thought you have?
Well, it's kind of like, we have to put the money up front, so it does come out of our pocket. That's money we can't put towards other things until we get paid back. And there's always that possibility, we don't get money back. I know lots of families during these times have been a little bit strapped. They're maybe not as, maybe the donations are not going to be as forthcoming, we just don't know. It's, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a gamble. I would expect we would get most of the money back, if not all of it, but it's not a guarantee, and that's my concern, is are we really spending the money in the best place for what the community wants us to do? I'd rather get a little more input from residents of the community first, maybe see if we can get some feedback from the public if they would like to see this happen or not, and depending on what feedback we get, that would really help to convince me that it's worth it.
I guess, again, I don't understand why this is a time-sensitive matter, why it has to be done today, why we have to put the money up front? Why can't we, you know, plan to do the project, solicit the, sell the bricks and solicit the funds, and then once you get the money, then you do the project? You know, it's like borrowing money to go out and buy a car as opposed to saving money then go buy your car. Why, why is this a time-sensitive issue that we have to go upfront as opposed to getting the money, selling the bricks, getting the money, then when you have your $10,000, then do the project? I don't understand.
Ryan, would you like to address that or no?
I don't know if you're going to address that. I don't know.
What was this, on the CIP, that would help? See, we haven't seen that yet. Was this one of the...
Right, hold on a minute, because Keith is talking, then after that it's Kay, because Kay hasn't had a chance yet either, but go ahead and...
Just, I don't know who can answer the question.
Is this an item in the master plan? No. Is it an opportunity to show some pride in Ortonville? Absolutely. It is money we would need to put out now, and it'll money, it's money that would begin coming back as soon as the first farmer's market, when Cos has a booth out there. I don't know if, has everyone met Cos? Do we know who we're talking about?
No.
Is he the gentleman that was at the practice?
Yes, he's the, he's the fish guy.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, he used to have seen the fish artwork at a lot of events in town for years and years and years. He has donated so much money to the schools and to BGYAA. He comes with wonderful artistic talents and donates things everywhere. What did he donate to the children, Shelby, for BGYAA? Didn't he do so many pieces of art?
He had tools against September Fest, I believe, that he was selling all art and money to make one to...
So it was something else, but he also gave, oh, it was the library. He did the library, he gave, donated children's artwork as well for, for them. So, again, heavily involved in the community, not that, I'm just letting you know, though it's not a, you know, some random person coming in asking for money from us.
And that's my, that's my thought on it, is if you don't weigh in, you can't wrestle, and I think this is a, if we are interested in pursuing this, I think we need to punch go sooner rather than later, and I think we'll begin to recoup the costs very soon.
Kay, please.
And I guess, what I want to say was, I've been involved in a number of these things where you buy, where you're starting, buy this, buy that, and they sell out. It's not ever, I've never seen it where they had to, somebody had to give them money to pay for it, and they sell, and, and beyond. And as Ryan said, it's the 100th anniversary, and I was here for the 150th, and that, you know, that's just one of the many things that probably will be done, or, you know, there'll be money involved in, in a lot of this, because it's a big celebration.
Any thoughts over there?
Well, I know this must, whatever profit we get, and I believe we'll get a profit, it's going to be split between the Historical Society and BGYAA.
I thought it was OCEF and BGYAA, isn't it?
So it's, it's a 50/50 split on, on profits.
Is it historical?
I think it was, is that correct, or do you remember?
After the meeting, it was presented to the Historical Society, and...
Oh.
Okay, so now, okay.
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
I was wondering why the Historical Society wasn't...
It's my bad, yeah.
Bottom line is, they don't own, they don't own anything, this is village property, this is why, you know, are all made, because our, but I realize that we receive what this will put the money up front. But I, I very much think that, that, you know, covering $10,000, they expect to get much more than that.
Steve quoted the thing here, when he talked about the 150. If all the spots were sold, it should raise $40,000. So there it is. You take 10 out, it would be $30,000, 15 to Brandon Grove, and 15 to the Historical Society.
So what are they selling them for roughly?
Uh, you got the front, I, my paperwork was all, the front was at $1,500, and it was too high, but I can see, you know, there's a lot of, um, for the time families, you know, that all together as a group. I, I think this is what I'm thinking, you know, I could probably need 20 more dollars. You know, if the families work together, and then the size is all a bit cheaper.
Yeah, so they have a good range.
Businesses and, right, groups in the community...
It's basically first, first served at the meeting, Steve commented, he's got a couple people waiting to write him checks for the front. he's got a couple people waiting to write him checks for the front comment as soon as they say go. I mean, that, that, and I'm just confused, that, um.
And at fifteen hundred dollars, the name times ten, there's our costs recouped.
Please.
So, again, that's what I reiterate, um, I don't know why this can't be a motion to, you know, set the property aside for the monument, and the Historical Society can move forward with the project, and then they can, you know, set, start the project, and, and as people are paying for the bricks, they get the money, and they do the project. I guess I just don't know why, if it's so easy to fund, why we have to pay for it upfront?
Uh, did you want to comment on?
Because it's a big chunk of granite, it takes time to cut the.
And the commitment, right?
Yeah, it's, it's not actually blocks, it's, it's ground.
The block, yeah.
Whether it be, you know, that, but, um.
So we need to place our order.
Uh, just one question, according to the quote that was enclosed, we only need to pay fifty percent of that upfront, so five thousand two hundred and fifty is what we would have to commit to immediately. And if there's enough fundraising between now and when the rest is due, there wouldn't be any more beyond that, and we could be recouped. So I would say right now, what we would have to commit to is just the fifty percent deposit at this time, and, um.
Where, where's that at?
Bottom. The bottom line, on the last page.
Under budget.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Because that's what it looks like needs to be paid immediately, is the five thousand two hundred and fifty or fifty percent, to get him to start working on it.
You want to redo your motion?
But we can't also stop mid-commitment. Are we going to say we're going to commit half of that and then change our mind on the other half? Then what? I mean, we can't do that, we have to commit to it.
I'm, I'm not saying.
Maybe we could commit to the timeframe.
Oh, I'm saying that in the, in the short-term budget, it would be half of it in this year's budget, and probably half of it in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, is what I'm talking about. So we could commit to the first half in this budget, and then we'd have to include the second half in the other budget.
Any, I was gonna say, any other additional thoughts?
Do that just internally, though, just approve it for the ten thousand five hundred, how we pay for it is up to us, isn't it?
No, because if you prove it now, it's all this year's budget.
Well, you could make the motion to split it in half.
Oh, we could amend the motion.
Right.
You could split the motion, or you could amend the motion.
But Larry would have to amend, if, did you make it?
His case motion.
I made the motion.
Okay.
I would like to amend the motion, and the motion, uh, to, uh, to say that, uh, we're going to pay fifty percent of that this year, which is five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and pay the other fifty percent in twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
And, uh, Pat, would you support that still? Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Are we ready for a vote? All right, um, can we please have a roll call vote on this?
Yes, I'm just noticing some names. Uh, Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Randazzo? Dialis?
No.
George?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes. Thank you, that motion carries five, two.
The only reason I'm saying all of this is because I would like to see more input from people to vote. That's, that's my only reason I'm saying all of this.
And, and I absolutely agree with you, and just as a reminder, everybody has public access to all of our meeting information at any time, and if you choose to be involved, we will see you, and you will send comments, and Ryan will receive emails and calls and things like that, too. So, just keep in mind, we do, we are always open and available and, and sharing and, and so. Would you, would we like more? Yes, would we like the seats full? Yes. All right, thank you, everybody. Next up is the DPW storage shed, and again, we'll start that off with Manager Manis.
All right, so, uh, this one, I gotta change my memo a little bit, after some late-breaking news. Uh, additional storage space has been ongoing need for the village for quite some time. This item's goal is to create additional storage space on village property for use by the DDA and the village. Uh, in twenty sixteen, I, we solicited and got a quote for, um, additional storage, um, putting a shed, uh, a shed roof next to the salt barn on the DPW property. Uh, Contractor Frank Olson of Olson Construction bid the project and submitted a scope of work outlining the project in November of twenty sixteen. Um, the project was not completed at that time, um, since the need for storage has increased and so has the price of storage. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the village and DDA reassessed the need for storage, um, in light of additional equipment acquired through the Oakland County Restaurant Relief Program. Um, the DDA has committed a portion of their Restaurant Relief Award, fifty-four hundred dollars to creating storage for these items. Your packet contains the updated contractor agreement and scope of work completed April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Frank reassessed the scope of work in light of current conditions, as well as the changes to materials cost since twenty sixteen, which, surprise, materials cost a whole lot more. Uh, the scope of work calls for a thirty by twenty foot shed roof to be added to the salt barn at the DPW garage with a simple six, six by six posts attached to the existing concrete slab. Um, in the future, siding could be added to the structure, but it would not happen at this time, so this is just for the roof, um, so outdoor storage. This will be built with future considerations in mind, allowing these to be added in the future. Um, adding sides at this time would have caused the price to triple from the original bid, uh, so that's why, uh, the, the sides aren't included at this time. Uh, the current bu- budget calls for twenty-eight thousand dollars in DPW building and grounds maintenance, of which more than twenty-four thousand has not yet been spent. Um, some bigger items for the building were addressed at a much lower cost this year than anticipated, and these funds can be used to add this improvement to the salt storage building, utilizing Restaurant Relief funds and the Village General Funds. This project will address a long-term need for the village and DDA. Um, after, uh, receiving this, uh, this scope of work, um, Bob and I had some further conversations, DPW Director Hawkswell and I, uh, met and talked about it, and we realized that outdoor storage, um, addresses the need a little bit, but it doesn't go as far as we would like. Um, and so, um, it's completely my fault, because Frank asked if we want to put sides on it right now, and I said, no, that gets really expensive really fast. Bob and I talked about some other solutions that I would like to look into more before we, um, commit either to this scope of work or another one. So that was just since, uh, the nineteenth, that we've had those conversations.
Do you want a motion to table this?
Is it table, what's the?
Or postpone.
Postpone, yes.
I'm sorry, postpone?
Yeah, it's on your cheat sheet there.
Okay, yeah, I love this, thank you, by the way. I'd like to make a motion to postpone the DPW, um, building for our next meeting, while village manager receives more information.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Nyveld, supported by Trustee Randazzo. Questions or comments on the motion? All right.
A comment, storage containers.
Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility, yeah. Uh, Bob and I want to look into storage containers, which are a similar price to this, and then look at someone like Frank to put a roof over that with additional storage for a similar price, so we gotta dig into that.
You're not with those, yeah, open sides, so.
Storage containers, they're pretty darn cheap.
Between five and seven thousand dollars usually, and we currently rent a storage unit, um, at the mini storage, so that would solve that problem, and then we'd have additional room. So, we gotta dive into it, but we didn't have time before the meeting after Patrick went out, so.
And those storage containers are actually fairly weather-tight.
They are.
Yeah.
So we will, um, not that I'm cutting you off, but we postpone the discussion.
Yes, yes, so sorry.
And we're going to get that back to you, and you guys can figure out what is best for your needs. Um, uh, all in favor? Opposed? That motion carries seven, zero. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
So if we do have additional, like, ideas, we can email you, right?
Yeah, I haven't thought about it yet.
Excellent, next month, yes, correct.
Just wanna make sure I got the.
Good, good call. Um, next up is the Village Street project, which, again, Ms. Manager Manis would love to share information on this.
I would, this is a big one. Uh, the Mill Street project, uh, referring to Mill Street from Church Street to the Village Limits going to the east. Uh, the Mill Street project has been budgeted for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, it's been engineered, bids have been received, and this item presents the opportunity to move forward with this project this fiscal year. Uh, Mill Street, east of Church Street, has been in need of resurfacing for some time, uh, to put it lightly. At the July twelfth, twenty twenty-one Village Council meeting, engineering was approved for this project, and the completed plans are in your packet and available in my office in a much bigger, uh, way, so it's easier to read. Uh, plans call for resurfacing Mill Street and what turns into Hummer Lake Road, uh, from Church Street to the village's eastern boundary, as well as addressing stormwater along the road. Based on these plans, bids were sought from interested and qualified contractors and submitted by the deadline of April eighth, twenty twenty-two. Four bids were received on this project. Because of the very details among the bids our engineer completed in apples-to-apples comparison, additional tonnage was considered for each bid, uh, because some, uh, some said exactly what was called for in the scope of work, and others said, we think to achieve the, uh, achieve the grade, we're going to need more tonnage. So we, uh, use that as the common denominator for an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, as we know, more asphalt may be required to achieve the necessary slope, and this was not factored into every bid. After many conversations and with consideration of additional factors that are unique to that stretch of road, uh, including existing drainage and potential complications, the bid from Diamond Excavating LLC best addresses those concerns. Further with his experience in the unique underground conditions in the village, as well as ability to work with and listen to village staff, we have concluded that the bid for Mr. Diamond will comprehensively address the needs of the village, residents, and the longevity of the road. This project's cost estimate was completed prior to the current fiscal year. The village was, budgeted a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for this project in the current fiscal year. To date, one hundred and eighteen thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty cents remains available for this project after the completion of an engineering and topographic study late in summer twenty twenty-one. Each bid was greater than this amount, and general fund balance will be needed to complete the work. If approved, the general fund will continue to have a healthy balance. We're not gonna spend all of our money on this project. Uh, our engineer, Pat Wick-Williams from Keef Engineering, DPW Director Hawkswell and I, will work to ensure the project meets the timelines and needs of the village and village residents. Elements of this project require a total road closure for some length of time to be determined, and will impact residents and circulation to and from the village. The project is estimated to take ten days to complete. Establishing and informing stakeholders of timelines for the project will be a focus for the village manager prior to and during construction. I recommend the village council approve the bid of Diamond Excavating LLC in the amount of two hundred and five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to complete the Mill Street project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Diamond Excavating in the amount two, two hundred and five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to complete the Mill Street project.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table by Trustee Dialis, supported by Trustee Green. Questions or comments at this time?
Um, yes, I had contacted Ryan about this matter, and I asked him about the other three bids that we received and what the amounts were, and about the, uh, comparison, the apples-to-apples comparison, and Ryan was gracious enough to send me handwritten, a copy of the handwritten sheet that has the apples-to-apples comparison. And looking at that, I do have a little, uh, some question about that comparison, because Diamond Excavating is two hundred and five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, one of the other companies had put in a bid, and even with the additional tonnage of asphalt included in there, that bid came to one hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So that's, uh, over twelve thousand dollar difference, and so I just wanted to, um, hear a little more of, of the justification of exactly why it is that we are looking to spend twelve thousand dollars more to go with the Diamond Excavating bid. Not that I am opposed to spending more if we can validate and show that there's really worth to it, but, you know, I have to keep in mind that we're spending taxpayer dollars, and, you know, this is our residents' money, so I feel that we really need to do our due diligence to make sure that we're really getting the best bang for the buck for our taxpayer dollars.
Yep, that's a very valid concern. Um, it, the bid from Diamond was not the lowest, um, like you said, um, the reason being the additional factors that are unique to that stretch of road that I alluded to. Um, that road, um, it, it predates me in the village by a long shot, but, uh, speaking with DPW Director Hawkswell, he remembers a time that the road, uh, looked very different, the topography was very different. I mean, it's a whole lot safer now than it was, but in changing that, uh, we've identified some different aquifers and different issues that are under the road and in the area, and there's, uh, essentially, there's a lot of landmines, um, along the road. So, it's a, it's a project that we know that the engineered plans may call for resurfacing and scraping the top three inches of asphalt, say. Um, and if you were to do that, you may run into some drains that have been put underground, uh, there may be other issues that, it may open a can of worms. Uh, and so, uh, the bid from Diamond reflected, um, our, uh, our confidence that we can work closely with him, and that, uh, he is a, he's an excavator that will listen to Bob when he says, don't go too deep over here, look out over there, um, be careful in this section because we know there's a spring, sometime, Bob knows where the road, um, you know, sometimes in the summer, on the driest day, there's water on the road. Um, and Bob knows where all those things are with his long history of maintaining it. Um, and so, uh, we feel that the, even though it's about twelve thousand dollars higher than the lowest bid, we feel that it best represents, uh, the needs of the village to address this project.
And as you say, we all know this has been continually on the council's agendas since two thousand and seventeen that I'm aware of, and it has come and left, and come and left, and come and left. We have spent money here and there, and I know Bob and past managers have shied away from the understanding that nobody is addressing the water, just the road, and, and I think, and I don't want to overstep you, you've mentioned you're very confident that somebody is listening to you, that it's the water and the road imbalance.
It's both, and that's why the.
And it's been, never been done before.
Right, and that's why the topographic study was done in twenty twenty-one, to understand where the water exists and other things, and we know that these plans do not fully reflect all of it, that a lot of it is in Bob's head of where those things are, and Bob knows it better than the plans ever could. And so that is a factor. Um, but there, there are a lot of water issues, and, um, there's stretches where you can see that there's some curb and gutter exists, um, there's some places where water always sits, where water has always, um, it's been a struggle to, to get the water off the road. Um, so this plant addresses the water all over the place, as well as the road surface.
And I know at one point, Bob and I walked it last year and the summer before, there are places that it is under two inches lower than it should be, that it has fallen, as we've continued to not address the subject, and it only going to get more expensive. I, I was gonna say, whoever was first, please.
So, since they are doing down here, Diamond, right? Could we, and if they're doing up there, hypothetically, we don't know yet until we vote, could there be some type of discount? Um, if their equipment is already here, since the other company was twelve thousand over, I don't know, could we realize any kind of benefit from having their equipment here? I don't know if they could do it back-to-back, I have no idea.
On this project, no.
Okay.
Uh, because there were several bids solicited.
Okay.
On the other project, yes.
Okay. And then, um, just curious, I know it would be ten days, would they be averting it down the dirt roads?
Yes, there's really no other route that I know of.
Okay, so coming anywhere out of there, you'd have to go that way to get that way?
Yes, so that's one, um, will work. If approved, um, Bob and I will work on what circulation's gonna look like before, and as we meet with Derek, we'll, we'd talk about what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
I have a few questions. So, number one, I guess, so how are we addressing the water?
Um, ditching in several places, um, curbs, uh, cleaning out some existing catch basins and adding some other structures to move water. There's a few spots that, um, water, there's, there's a few, call it a trench, Water Resources Mission, WRC sometimes calls them a stream, um, just because, uh, but there's some existing places where water flows to, but we need to clean them out and, and enhance them so the water actually gets there, rather than pools next to that spot.
So in his quote, is, is doing some of that work as well?
Yes.
Okay, um, second question is. Okay. Second question is, what are we doing at the bottom of the hill where it's really low?
That's where I think most of the tonnage is going to go, to give that a crown so the water actually comes off and then it flows.
I couldn't quite get that off the plan.
I want to say it's of four inches from center to
So we're only raising it four inches?
The crown will be four inches higher.
Than what it is today?
Than the, where it meets the curb. I'm not an engineer, so I'm sorry.
Because it, that, which leads into my third question. Parts of that road are pretty much gravel at this point, and if I, if I'm reading this, this bid properly, we're only looking at putting two inches on, on the whole project.
So that's where the apples-to-apples came in, is we know there will be additional tonnage. And that, and the bid from Diamond includes additional tonnage. So we
So the, but the engineers weren't calling out for two inches?
Yes.
Because he's, he's reporting to the engineers.
Specs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, I'm just trying to understand how, how that process is going to go. So when he's going to get here, then you guys are going to say, "No, we don't really want two, we really want four in this area," or because usually they go by the engineer's plans, don't they?
More or less, but we know there's other factors here. For all the days to Dan, for Dan to skip, right? Yeah, there'll be some give and take on it to make sure it works and that it's done correctly. So will everything be to these plans exactly? No. Will we need to do, to do an as-built engineering study after? Most likely. To show what? There will be some decisions that have to happen between the contractor and Bob.
So I get the, I get the crown part, like at the bottom of the hill, for instance, the back of that question. I get the crown being four inches taller on the sides, I get that, but the whole area is low and there's not good drainage from the, the south side to the north side, because water's pooling on the south side.
Yeah.
So it's almost like you need to put a culvert through there or something to get the water to flow from the north through the south so that stays dry and bring it up like a foot or something.
That may be the case. There's at least one culvert called for in the plans, and I can't remember.
They're addressing the drainage already, so therefore, once that's addressed.
So I thought we did that.
What are we addressing? I want to understand. I can't seem to get the answer, that question answered.
Right, but we, we did a couple of things back when we were on it, and then I don't know if they did anything in between.
Right.
But I know there was a culvert and then there was the rock. But I'm, I'm with you as far as like the two inches, even the four inches, that is just not even close to what that needs to bring, bring up. Is, is this an up-two number then? I mean, or is this, can they then come change it?
Yeah, as they add more tons later, they'll add more.
Because there's going, there's going to be more, yeah.
That's the bid with 200 additional tons.
Okay. I don't know how much that will really cover.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it.
Well, and keep in mind how many years it took to get to the point that it's at. It, it's, it's not going to change that much from this point if we get the work done. It's not like we're going to wait another two years from the last engineering study to get this done. So will it change how much comparatively, like you're saying, you, when you were on council prior, there were things done. When I was in council prior, there were things done. Nothing was addressed. We have not corrected that. The drainage issue is now addressed. DPW has been on that correctly for two years. They continually clean that point and they continually care for that. It has been dry. We don't see that because the road has, the road has never been repaired from the issues that it was caused, so therefore you have to do both at the same time. But the water issue has been addressed and they are
That's a full statement.
To the best of our ability with the resources we have.
But it hasn't been fixed.
If you look at page two, on the right-hand side, there's a note, it's very small, so I'll read it. It addresses where that water pools on that stretch, in this low area about 200 feet in length.
Hang on, hang on, so page two?
Page two.
The bottom middle number?
There's sheet two, right here.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page.
Sheet two of the engineered plans.
Oh, right.
The contractor will first fill in and level the low areas, then place a two-inch asphalt to set roads. Centerline crowned four inches above to maintain a 3% cross slope.
Fill in and level. But again, how are we addressing the water from the south side to the north side? We're not addressing that?
Coming across.
Yeah, because you can see there's puddles on the south side of the road.
So this will enhance the ditches that already exist on the side of the road, because there are some there. They've been there and filled in over time, so it will clean them out. If you keep reading around there, the notes, it, there's one, two proposed ditches, a proposed 12-foot, 12-foot at 5% grade ditch. And then there's the note below that says, "Clean out sediment from end of 12-inch pipe to 150 linear feet to the south" and others. So some, that does exist. That's where, we know that's where water pools. There's some little, call them trenches, where the water goes now, but it takes a couple of days to dissipate after a heavy rain. Doing this, it would, it would clear much faster. So it would clean out what's there. It would enhance the, all the effort that's been put into it already by the DPW and it would make the water move more efficiently.
And just so I can understand, so it's clear in my head, on the south side of the road, up in the middle of the hill, is where we have, there's some, some drainage, I don't know what you call those, crocks now or what have you. But we're going to do work in that area to help that drain better?
Yeah.
Larry, please, sir.
All the talk about the drainage seems to be focusing on the service water drainage. If there are truly spots where even when it's dry in the summer, where you see water or wet areas on the road, that would indicate, and we know that this is true of our area here, that there may be some underground artesian pressure as a source of some of the water coming up. What happens if they start doing into this and we have a situation where they hit something unexpected like that? And suddenly, it's, it's, what do we got for cost overruns then? Because I mean, are we going to look and say, "Oh, gosh, now we're going to have to sink another $80,000 in this because we hit something unexpected." We already had cost overruns on the one project and we could have cost overruns here. Are we prepared to cover those?
Ask the engineer, ask the council.
I was going to say, yeah.
We have to keep in mind that this 205,000, oh yeah, includes the extra 200 tons or whatever, but there could be a lot more work that they uncover when they start. I'm not saying there is, but I'm just saying we have to take into consideration. If we're going to make a motion to approve this, then we also need to consider in the budget process how much extra we can do to also set that up. But I mean, that, that is a concern of mine, is that, you know, this one's already $12,000 more than the other and you don't have additional cost overruns.
I think that's the case with every project. I mean, that's how it was with Crosman, is we didn't know what we were getting into and we had to. We have to get into it to find those questions out. I think every project is a mystery. There is always something that you don't know. What do we know? What research have we done? And how can we confidently make a decision based on that? I think is the only thing we can do. We are not the engineers and we are not the construction crew. And that's how every project comes to us. I mean, you know, just saying that. A very valid question, but it's questions we can't answer and we don't have the facility to answer.
Question, the, the only thought comes to my mind is, were those things considered? And was that, you know, discussed with contracts and stuff, what would you do if we find this or that together to get some kind of a concept of how capable they would be at dealing with those things? And, you know, what expected cost overruns are going to be in terms of expected things?
Pat, please.
Yeah, I guess my main concern on this is right now, we got a court of $205,000 with, with a reasonable likelihood that there would be cost overruns. And yet, we cannot approve $10,000 to the citizens of this town. To put in, to put in a piece of grant where we know we have a right to get that $10,000 back. Just money that goes out, right, getting back. Am I right, Keith?
No, you're not right, Pat.
What are we concerned about with $10,000 to give to the citizens of this town?
Because you're putting the cart before the horse.
So let's focus on the motion.
What we're dealing with this is what you're suggesting to the citizens of this town, who need to resurface this part of the building.
I'm sorry?
We need to resurface this part.
We have. This is for five years.
So if you don't mind, it's one at a time, and Pat has the floor, please. Pat, if you can stay on the topic of this project.
No, I, I, I think this is BS. I did this. I put it in a point. This is BS. You can't get $10,000 to the citizens, the senior citizens of this town are worthwhile project, $10,000, which we have a good likelihood of getting that money back. But we can throw $205,000 fine with, with overruns. But we won't want to look at it in this any part of the building, Keith, because you've already had it up there for five years. No, I, I, I'm just having difficulty understanding that, you know.
I'll explain to you later, Pat.
The rationale.
I'll explain to you later.
So Pat, I know Kay is waiting. Did you have anything else on Mill Street? I know Kay's waiting next. Did you have anything else for the Mill Street before?
No, I'm, well, no.
I appreciate it.
Until I get my $10,000.
We did. We approved it.
It was approved.
We have it split up into two pieces.
All right. Kay, I'm sorry, I know you're waiting. Look around here. Anybody else that hasn't had a chance yet that would like to share anything? They have a question, any thoughts? I don't want to put you out, because not everybody has a thought, but I know everybody gets the chance to share their thoughts. If you don't mind, hold on. No, I'm not pointing at you. I'm just saying, some of us haven't spoke yet and I just want to make sure you get a chance.
The only thing I can speak on, which is, when they redid the, the bridge at Paul Street, that was, that was a while back, but I know they're ready to do their problem. Are they, I don't know if anybody asked, asked them, are they taking everything they've been dealing with, like over here, into back over here, like all the sand, things like that?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if, okay, what happens if we don't have that problem, the sand over here, but it's part of that quote, right? So, I mean, I'm just going to put it in, what's going to happen when we get, you know.
They're not digging down over here. They're not tearing the top off and digging down.
No, they're not repeating, I know.
No.
Only as much as needed, trying to avoid.
And I'm, honestly, I, I don't drive down it that much because of the
There will be some similar conditions, but not, it's a different beast, but there's some similarities.
But my only concern, for example, I know a lot of people are concerned, like around Halloween, there's some sidewalks here that people will walk down and it's dark. But that's a different, that's a different issue.
It is different, yeah. There are sidewalks all the way to Crescent Hill.
Right.
But, yeah, not all the way to the limit.
No, yeah, it's a little dark, but that would be, I think, what you're thinking. So Ryan, I did have a couple of questions. Did they give us somewhat of a timeframe from start to finish? Not obviously when in the year, but how long it might be?
The bid sheet says 10 days.
Did it? Oh, right there. You know what? If I moved my cursor up just a bit. I'm like, I thought it said somewhere. The other thing is, we are very, very cognizant of the money. That is what our job is. The engineering and the knowledge and the roadwork is not our forte. How is Bob with this? What are his thoughts? And I don't want to put you on the spot for what Bob thinks, but the feedback you've received.
I know that the DPW crew spends a lot of time keeping Mill Street drivable. Summer, winter, year-round, there are issues on that road, and the goal of this project is to address those issues. We know that two of the nicer streets in the village are Cedar Street and Schoolhouse. Those use a significant amount less of salt in the winter because they're roads that are in good shape. And so they're easier to maintain, they're easier to plow, they're much easier. So to improve a road, that amount of road, where we know there's been issues for a long time, if it was easier to maintain year-round and took less salt in the winter, it would be a fantastic improvement for the DPW. They could, they could accomplish a lot more if they didn't have to babysit that road year-round.
And he's mentioned, this is, he's confident and comfortable with this particular bid?
Yeah, we talked through all four bids.
Thank you. Not that I trust you, I was just curious.
No, I, I defer to Bob on pretty much all things with roads or pretty much anything, really.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, ideas? Are we ready to go to a vote?
Larry, to address your question earlier, with springs in the middle of the road, the only right way to fix that, to your point, is to dig down about four to six feet and put drainage in to the water drains properly. And the amount of money that would cost to do that versus the longevity of the road that it would add wasn't
Feasible?
Cost effective.
Cost effective, I guess, because it would, yes, it would increase longevity of the road, but eventually the road's going to deteriorate and fall apart anyways. And what we have has lasted, has lasted a long time, and that was even prior to the fixes that we've done within the last few years. So we have helped the cause, we haven't fixed the cause, but now hopefully with the new additional drainage things that they're going to do, that should, again, it will never stop the, the spring totally, help, hopefully it'll at least help the issue. So it has been looked at, because that was, that's what I wanted to do originally, but it just became cost prohibitive.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate that input.
Anything else before we go to a vote? All right, we will have a roll call vote on this, please. Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo? Dialas?
Yes.
George?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries 6-1. Next up is the village manager's report. I'm sure Ryan has some amazing things for us once again.
All right, that's, we've voted on a couple of babies, so. But I have fails in comparison. The two that I wanted to mention to you, and I'm probably stealing somebody's thunder, is go to Wojo's this weekend and mention BGYA. The flyer and information, it's available through your BGYA contacts, your Brandon Grohl and Youth Assistance people. It's on Facebook, it's all over the place. Go to Wojo's this weekend. 10%, right? Goes directly to BGYA, so.
If you mention it.
If you mention it. Thank you.
Yeah, they won't give it to you unless you mention it.
Yeah, got to say it. All right, let's get into the packet stuff. Your packet contains the 2022 Building Department permits. Any question on that? That's one we like to disclose orderly.
Just a, well, question comment. Are we putting permit fees on CIP?
In what way?
I guess, one of the things, I don't know, one of the classes that I took, that because it generates some revenue, we are supposed to have that on the CIP, but I also know we don't have our fee schedule completed yet.
I don't know, as a, CIP is mostly money out and as a revenue source. I think it fits, it's, I mean, they are on our general budget.
I'm sorry, in the budget. I'm so sorry.
Yes, they are on our current budget as well.
Okay.
Looking at it. There are some zoning fees. Your first page of your, your budget will tell you about that.
I just, I know we did
Building Department, sorry, there it is, Building Department revenues.
Beautiful. And then, that'll be something that are, that we'll have down the road, the updated fees.
It is one, we're not the only community that has an outdated fee schedule.
That's what you were saying.
Yeah. And our new inspector, our new building inspector and building official are working out very well. Jenna and I both speak with Mr. Wilton regularly about building department issues. He's extremely helpful.
Okay.
Any questions on building department permits? All right. Next up is update on Friends of the Trail. Your packet contains a quick write-up. We had our first two first meetings, is what we call them, for the Friends of the Trail. uh, for the Friends of the Trail effort. Uh, we're in the very early stages of developing the friend group. Um, it's not a, it's not an item that'll be on every upcoming agenda, but, uh, if interested, please, uh, complete that Google form. I know most of you have. Um, and if you already have, share it with a friend so they can join if they're interested in trails in Ortonville. Uh, based on the, the first, the two first meetings, we held two meetings that were very similar at different times so we could catch more people. Um, April fourteenth and nineteenth, uh, we had more than twenty people attend, which is a very good start. The mailing list is up to almost forty people. Uh, next, the group is gonna meet for a hike. Um, the plan is to hike on Saturday afternoon at four P M. Um, take a hike in the village park Saturday at four. I will send more information. Um, I'm confirming our hike leader for Saturday afternoon and I haven't heard back from Mr. Macabachi.
This Saturday?
This Saturday. Yep.
Did we get something on there?
Yeah. I haven't confirmed.
And then is Rick the one that's going to be leading all of these?
He's the person who's been back there the most and then Bob MacArthur is also gonna be included.
All right, but we're not having, um, council boards or anything, um, spearheading this effort, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a background knowledge. It's, we don't have a, a head yet. And I'm not familiar enough with it to say I can lead a hike, I'm back there confidently.
And it's both, um, both areas, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna start with, um, the, call it the west side, the, the, the old train line essentially.
Okay, cool.
Because of the road rally downtown where we can't meet in here or the garden, so we gotta be a little creative in where we meet.
Cool.
It's probably gonna be Harvey Swanson. So more info to come, but, uh, trails are off and running or hiking or whatever trails do you, questions? I also gave you the, um, printout of my kind of quick and not totally encapsulating minutes from those first two meetings. Uh, you've got them in your digital packet as well.
Yeah, and then the fundraising efforts.
That's the part I'm missing.
Yeah, when I started reading those bullet points, I started to get a little concerned about what they thought they were gonna be doing until I saw the last one about what will be expected by us here in the first step. I'm like, okay, good.
Yes. Last one, website update planning. This is the IT committee, um, is gonna be taking up this item in the near future. Um, the website has used the same website, the, I'm sorry, the village has used the same website and email provider for several years. IGD Solutions has been a very helpful, very reliable vendor for us for a very long time. Uh, they informed us recently of upcoming changes for our website. So the platform that our website is hosted on is becoming obsolete later this year. Uh, it means we need to consider what's next for our website and our web presence for the Village of Ortonville. Um, it'll require some time, some effort, it will cost money, um, mostly in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. It's not a thing we need to act on immediately, uh, but it's gonna be a, an effort in the near future. Any questions on that?
Just a comment. I know some people on council might have some experience with managing websites. And so we certainly would appreciate input from anybody on council in terms of suggestions for what direction we might want to take with this. Do you continue with this? Do you look maybe for different website hosting or, or whatever? But we want to consider all the options and, and then come up with what's best.
More to come on that item. Questions? Uh, I did want to say, you may have noticed that we have a different recording secretary tonight than we do most nights. But, uh, I'm gonna be a little slow sending you minutes, so don't expect them till early next week. So I apologize in advance, but, uh, yeah.
She's got shorter hair than I do.
Yeah. Cool. That's it for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. And as usual, any questions or thoughts, please direct them to Ryan, anybody? We are now at the fabulous, um, point in our agenda where we would love to hear from the public. Anything that is a non-agenda item only. You have three minutes to speak. Raise your hand, stand up, share anything with us, questions? We'd love to hear from you. Please.
Thank you. Since all of your, I'm, I'm named Paul. I currently serve as an open county commissioner since two thousand fifteen in District Six, which is currently White Lake and the Chalk of Water. Since, uh, the district process of the county law, we went from twenty-one districts to nineteen. And, uh, my district now that I'm running in is the northern parts of White Lake and Highland Township. Goes up in the Holly, um, Village of Holly, uh, Rose, Springfield, Roeland, Brandon, Ortonville, and a tiny part of Fenton, the city of Fenton that falls in the open county. So, but, um, you know, know a lot of people up in this, this, these areas and, um, I represent Springfield and Highland as a part of my, uh, state house, as a servant state house from two thousand nine to fourteen. But anyway, I'm just, uh, looking forward to getting to know your community better. And it sounds like you guys have a great sense of community, so I, I want to know you better so that when I start serving as your county commissioner in twenty twenty-three, I'll be better able to represent your interests to the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I also wanted to say we appreciate your involvement with BGYA as well. We've been seeing you at the events and, and we duly appreciate them, total involvement. Thank you. Anyone else?
Right?
All right, next time. Um, item fifteen is the additional items from the trustees and we will start with Tony, please.
Um, okay. May we first, um, according to the ladies night out, we're also doing the parks and our, uh, double picture. So you, uh, all friends, uh, interacting with all parties. Uh, what we're doing is we have some students that will come in and monitor the kids. Uh, while their parents, well, moms and parents are, are having a good time, the kids can come in here. Uh, and, uh, so, for that's a double picture, like I said, it's all, it's going to entail the entire time. That being absolutely still, uh, I would tell the motion. Unfortunately, um, I will not be there on Saturday, uh, up, uh, for, for, uh, some, maybe. Oh, like, sorry, I didn't watch Menagerie. We have a town. But, um, other than that, uh, I, I did want to, um, I did talk to, um, uh, Sydall a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I've never seen him, he can't ever, uh, his employees, like I see, um, they, uh, people, super happy. I know one guy's name is Tony, he's getting, so.
Matt?
Matt.
We have two Tonys and two Matts between councils.
There you go. That'll help, that, yeah, that'll help me remember too.
Thank you very much. Anthony, please.
Oh, okay. I attended the BGYA, um, evening event and it was wonderful. Um, a lot of, a lot of people. Pat was there, Ryan and Courtney and Tanya, of course. Um, um, it was very nice and a lot of kids, I think a hundred and eighty-two is something, what Bob had mentioned? One eighty-nine? Okay, yeah, um, but it was really, really nice, um, to attend and I appreciated the invite. Um, let's see, I'll be volunteering at the market day, um, for DDA. And I was go, I bought a ticket to go to the main event. Um, I'm not sure now if, um, I can attend. I have to see what the agenda is for Planning Commission. Because Planning Commission was, is having their meeting on the Thursday instead of the Tuesday and I didn't realize when I bought the ticket.
Can I reschedule so you can all come?
But if you need more people, I'm thinking maybe we need to change the date of the Planning Commission meeting. If you need more people to attend the main event and it's just a thought.
Yes.
Um, and then I've been taking a lot of webinars and I got, I received some really good trail info and, uh, grants that I passed on to Ryan for trails to put in the booklet. And I believe that is it and thank you for coming and sitting through this, saving. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Larry, please.
Well, you know, that, that Mill Street event is a great event and maybe, maybe just have all the commissioners go and have your Planning Commission meeting.
Right?
But yeah, I would encourage anybody who can go to that. It's a great event. I've been to one of those in the past. They're, they're a lot of fun. Other than that, you know, just looking forward to all the events coming up this year. I know the DDA is working very hard. We're excited to see more things and activities in our community this year. I'm glad to see things solved, getting back to normal. Uh, and just one thing, thinking about the budgeting process and some comments, you know, it makes me think of, uh, you know, what we need to do when it comes to that is, it's, reminds me of this whole story about doing projects and doing your tasks and big rocks and little rocks and things like the big street prizes are like the big rocks. That's why we have to say, okay, we gotta get these big rocks in the budget first. And then the little pieces, they're, those are the ones you fit in as, as you can fit them in. I think that's why we try to focus on getting these big products moving and then we might nitpick on some of those little things, but it's just a matter of which of those little pieces will fit into that, that yard of budget that we have. That's kind of how I look at it and I think that's what we need to do, thinking about a budget plan. And that's where the CIP is really gonna help us because we'll know a lot more about what those big rocks are that we have to handle first. Looking forward to the budgeting this year, especially with the CIP. Appreciate everybody's effort on all these things.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, Kay, please. All right. And Pat, please.
Yeah, I'm just thinking here, let's see, so the bottom line, it would be a good show of faith for all the senior citizens of this town, ten thousand dollars. And in addition to that, I know coming up, we've got, we've got what, sixty, forty, sixty friends of trails are gonna be asking this town for money for trails. And I know we gotta remember Lexi coming up with life or, and I moderate those. I'm done.
Thank you. Keith, please.
Um, I, I guess the only thing I have is I, I've seen us do this time and time again. I've, I've watched lots of other communities do projects in the community and, and they don't put the money up front. They go and they put a plan together and they get, uh, donations, uh, to fund the project and that's how they accomplish their projects. Um, uh, Lake Orion put in a whole baseball diamond and didn't spend a dime and it was all donations. Um, and we keep wanting to just, oh, the village can just pay for that, village can just pay for that. Um, I don't know why we're not utilizing those same techniques and, and soliciting donations to fund projects and, and do projects. But there's a lot more projects that we could be doing if we were, if we were soliciting donations to accomplish those projects, which, which people are more than happy to do.
Thank you. Um, everything on my checklist has already been set, so I have absolutely nothing this evening. I'm just crossing them all off. So thank you very much, everybody. Ryan, anything, last minute words of wisdom for us? All right, thank you very much. Um, what I'm looking for now is a motion to adjourn. Wow. Wait a minute, who's supported? All right. We have a motion to, um, or on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Green. Questions? All right, hearing none. Eight forty-four, the meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.